Those who are less fortunate than us, and we are thankful for your blessings. We showered in high sun on county. We pray for wisdom as we make decisions for those of constituents today. We pray in all our ways we give you the honor, the praise and the glory of our great mistake.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, as you can see, has vacated the premises. No, he had a meeting with Freightliner today, Scoops, so he cannot be in the audience. First up, we will go through the minutes. You receive those. Any questions, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve, and I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Two, zero. All right. Payroll, 25 for calendar year 2017. Total is the amount of $212,420.23. We had a total of 196 claims in the amount of $609,425.3 cents.
Motion to approve payroll and claims.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Two, zero. Okay. Monte, we have you up first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have 90 inmates, three DOC and 19 or F6 DOC last week. I don't think I've ever seen it where we could replace the windows in the office in December. We had a good week and got all that accomplished last week.
Great. Fantastic.
Yep.
Anything else going on?
No, I think there was a contract on the lease on the thing. I signed my page.
Okay.
So, I believe.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. You too. Josh?
Morning.
Good morning.
Backhoe crew, all our south notes are complete for the year. North should be done this week. 900 West Road Conversion Project, all the roads are widened, most of the ditches are where they need to be. We have installed all of our 20s, our base stone, and are now to the top stone. Probably be complete with that here in the next couple of weeks, so that road will be ready to set for winter and freeze up and thaw. All hand patchings done, spot patchings done. There's a couple of spots that I've got the dirt patcher still loaded up with one more load for some odds and ends here before, you know, full-fledged winter hits. But for the most part, all that's done. Last week, we prepped about half the trucks for winter, so everything's ready to go, lights, tires, beds. It's just a matter of putting salt spreaders in and getting things like that done, so we're pretty close with just being ready for that unfortunate situation. This week, we do also plan to run all the gravel roads and most of the paved roads, make sure there's no stone that needs added before winter, just for the freeze and thaw, because if we don't do it now, come spring, we'll have a muddy mess out there. So, we're going to do that this week also in preparation for winter, but that's about it. Just getting the conversion done and getting ready for winter.
Are you sticking around or are you leaving right now? I have a couple of questions I want to ask you afterwards.
Yep, yep. I'll be here.
Great.
Okay.
Other than that, short and sweet.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Excellent work.
Nate?
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Quick update for you on Bridge 142, Zanesville Bridge on 300 West. We should have some more information as far as the final scope at the next meeting, but how, right now, from the discussions with USI, it looks like a rehab is very likely possible. The chloride test came back, the chlorides content in the concrete at the bottom. We think that what we can do is actually take about five feet of the south span off while having that jacked up or lifted with a crane, replace that end, replace the top of the pier, and then reset it. And so, it would be more of a rehab versus a full replacement. And working through some final items as far as what the design of that would look like. But to move forward, I guess the question is, and this was a recommendation from USI, was can we declare the project an emergency project? State law allows, as an emergency project, that you could do an invitation to bid versus a full public bid. The project itself, I don't have a tight cost estimate at this point. It's most likely going to be above the public bid threshold, which would have all the timeframes, advertisements, and the rest. To try to expedite the project, an emergency declaration allows us to invite to bid no less than two contractors would be invited to bid the project, would take those bids, and award it to the lowest eligible contractor. So hopefully, both of them would be included. If we don't desire to do that, certainly, we'll go through the traditional process. The reason for doing this would be to essentially save us some additional time on the closure, probably as much as 30 days we'd be able to cut from the schedule if we did the emergency declaration. If we don't, that's fine. We'll go through the advertisements. We'll probably see bids come in first week of February, and then notice to proceed, and we can move forward. If we don't, we'll try to get a contractor selected and awarded the first week of January is about what we'd be looking at. So, I guess I kind of leave it up to you and Roy. Obviously, it's as a legal issue as far as making that declaration, because you are kind of breaking from the standard process for projects.
Is there a downside to?
Statute says you have to send it to no less than two.
Two, correct.
It doesn't prohibit you from soliciting more proposals.
It does not. We just have to name who would be inviting, and there'd have to be some detailed information in the minutes as to why. Certainly, we've been talking about the Zanesville Bridge project for the last few meetings, so there is a record as to what's going on. It's an emergency closure of the road. It's a heavily traveled county road for us. It's a major impact of Zanesville. So, I think the case as to why it's there, we've covered, but certainly, I'll give you information to include as well. Primo Construction would be one of the firms, HIS Constructors would be the minimum. If we had others, Pioneer would be a firm that we could potentially request a quote from. RL McCoy is another firm that's done bridge projects.
Who did the Marzane Road Bridge? Toby, remember that one? Is that RL McCoy?
I think that was McCoy.
Yeah. So, I mean, it would be just, it would be up to you as far as, certainly, two is the minimum. We'd have to at least identify those two in the minutes as to what we're inviting and the why. But if we want to invite more, certainly, I just need to pass that on to USI so that we bring them into the discussion, pass the information on, and then I'll try to get all the quotes in and get those in for our first meeting in January is the goal.
So, you've already spoke in prior meetings about the nature of the problem and the fact that you felt it necessary to close the bridge.
Correct.
Entirely.
Yes.
If the commissioner, do the commissioners require any additional information?
I think it's a good idea to move forward and get it done soon.
My recommendation would be to send the proposal, request for proposal, to all the usual suspects that you would anticipate bidding on it, so at least you've got the numbers. You just didn't take.
A public advertisement.
A and B to the exclusion of C through F.
Sure. What I'll do is I can, wish I could name everybody offhand that we had bid on our latest bridge projects, but I can update that and have that to you. So, I guess what we'll do prior to receiving the quotes, if you could make the emergency declaration, then what I'll do is I'll identify the contractors, and we'll specifically identify them at the next meeting prior to receiving any quotes. And then, I would still give them time from the December 18th meeting prior to our January meeting to get all of our quotes in place. That way, we're not excluding anybody that would be interested in the project.
Motion to declare this an emergency.
Yeah, and I would suggest and direct the county engineer to send request proposals from the likely candidates who would submit bids.
You getting that quote, Beth?
I mean, based on what you've recommended in the sense?
Yes.
Yes, that was a motion, and I will second that.
Okay. Maybe text us or email us the list that you come up with, please.
Sure. We'll do it.
Emails of more permanent records, that'd be great.
Certainly, very much. I know it's kind of an odd thing to do, but certainly, I've been asked numerous times, how do we speed this up? When are we going to do something?
Citizens are really wanting it fixed, too, so I think it's in the best interest of everyone.
Well-traveled road, former state road. I think it deserves attention, so.
Trying to exercise our options, and this is one of them, so. I'm number two here. We're talking about County Road 500 West. It's one of our road conversion projects that's in the queue. We actually have all the right-of-way for that road, but the conversion itself needs to wait until we move forward on Bridge 112. That's a bridge rehab project that's in the process of being designed. Something that came up with the recent rains, Saturday, a couple of weeks ago, was the flooding of the Eight Mile. And talking to some of the guys at the Highway Garage and with Jared, there's the area north of that bridge washes out fairly regularly. We actually have to fill the area in. The photograph that you see on my notes actually shows some of the roadstone being washed off as a result of the waters.
That's not where it's designed.
Not where that's supposed to go. That's a regular expense for the county and as remote as it is.
Plus up for the mowing, too.
Yeah, so the property owner gets harmed by it. We get harmed, and so a permanent solution has never been really proposed. Before we move forward with the road conversion, I want to do a hydraulic analysis. Unfortunately, that bridge is historic select, which is why we're promoting a rehab option. So, raising the bridge, widening it or tearing it out and replacing it really isn't an option. So, I'm going to, I'd like to ask USI to put a number together to do a more extensive hydraulic model of that and give me an idea of what size secondary culvert. And that would maybe be a box structure that we'd put for floodwaters to the north in this area so that we could raise this up before we chip and seal it.
Is this picture looking south or?
Looking south at the bridge. Actually, I'm standing just about at the low.
That's kind of how I pictured when I drove it.
Yep. So, that's what you're seeing is this water is washing from, you're facing south, or the water's coming from east to northwest.
Gotcha.
And when the waters are up, it tops the road and washes us out. Raising the road up or just adding eight, I mean, for us, we really can't just add eight inches of stone to the road because we're in the floodplain at this area. So, we'd have to get full floodplain permitting and the rest. So, that complicates it. Otherwise, we're taking this out and asphalting it to try to hold the road down and the floodplain so we don't lose it, because this area is subject to saturation, vehicle travel, and it's really impassable after a rain like that until we put more stone down. Chip sealing it in place, though it's possible, is really a low-cost option. I didn't feel right about just putting something down in this area and leaving it flood, because we will have done the bridge and we will have done the road, and we have fixed an obvious, notorious problem. But just filling it in and getting the floodplain issues done doesn't save Zanesville, because this actually is water from Zanesville coming northwest. This is the next bridge downstream, actually goes past Marzane, but our 142 to Marzane Road then comes up to here. So, things we do at this location can have potential impacts downstream, and I want to be able to document that with some modeling results before we go and do something material changed or that.
What from idem or how many corals will we have?
We'll have some construction of the floodway permit, depending on what we do to the channel up close to the bridge. We'd certainly have a floodway permit. Some of the floodway actually work we could do would be local permit of construction in the floodplain. So, it actually would go through our area plan.
Gotcha.
And they would look for us to, anything we fill, we're hauling stone to build the road base up, or we take soil, we're going to have to dig from elsewhere in the floodplain. So, I may have to talk to the property owner to the east. If we're going to dig a large hole there, I'd have to go to him for a temporary construction easement so we can dig dirt out of that area.
Make a nice pond, is that what you're saying?
Well, actually, probably what I'd do is I'd slope his yard back to the Eight Mile and take the bank of the Eight Mile out, open that up, and use the good soil we have to build this road up.
Right.
And we, in the low, potentially, the road would come up as much as three feet. I'd take the deck of the bridge and just take a straight line horizontally to the north and then come up, versus what happens right now is the bridge drops about three feet from the bridge deck down. The bridge still is subject to flooding, but it's probably the lowest-cost option versus do nothing.
Are there driveways?
There's actually no driveways in this area, thankfully, because of the floodplain. There's no homes that are immediately impacted by it. It's simply a cut, fill, balance equation that we have to do, but I want to make sure hydraulically, whatever we do, we don't dam the water up.
Right.
So, that's what the model is. So, USI will be giving me a number on that. Hopefully, all the additional work from this approach to the north could be included as part of our community crossings application for the bridge project versus us putting the entire burden on the road conversion project. So, we'll see what comes up with that, but it's kind of an FYI to all of you as far as why that project's going to get kind of big, because I want to address an old flooding issue that's just not been addressed. And you can see, we're spending carry money whole and regularly, and it's not getting better. I think when we're done with the project, we can settle the issue long-term, so.
Sounds good.
And the last item I have for you then is right-of-way dedications. We have the last right-of-way from 1150, tearing down and he's signed, so.
So, we can actually to.
To approve and accept and sign the right-of-way and proceed with 1150.
And I will second that. Two, oh.
One other thing, as you pointed out in the section on emergencies, the resolution has to specify the persons invited to bid. You mentioned in your report, Primo and HIS.
Mm-hmm.
And who else?
That's what he was going to get back with us on.
Do we want to make the, can that be two different resolutions then, or do they need the resolution for the emergency needs to include that?
The, well, as you say, the minutes of the board must show the declaration of emergency and the names of the persons invited to bid or provide quotes. If you would like, what we can do is include Primo, HIS.
You named four of them.
Pioneer, and RL McCoy. Since Judy did two of them, do you want to include them? Is that, is that a?
They're a smaller firm for a project like this?
But maybe, I mean. All they can, all they can do is not submit on.
All they can do is not submit. So, I guess what we can do is include them as well, so you'd be inviting five bidders. All of them did bid on your latest bridge project. Excuse me.
So, I would suggest you.
Include that in.
And Judy. Include that in your resolution.
Did you get those, Beth?
Pioneer, HIS.
Toby, did you have anybody else?
Primo, RA McCoy, or is it, what is it?
RL.
RL.
McCoy. And then Judy, Judy Excavating. Sorry about that. No. No, appreciate that. So, we'll just do that. So, that will be the list, and so I'll pass that on to USI to invite all of them to bid on the project.
Okay.
All right?
Excellent.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Rick, have you up next?
Morning.
Hey, good morning.
Last week, you opened the bids, or last meeting, you opened the bids for the cyclical reassessment that's required by the legislature. I'm just here to recommend that you accept a bid of Nexus Group of $436,000 for 2018 through 2021. It's approximately $109,000 a year, and Nexus was the only bidder. I advertised it twice in the both Wells County papers, and bid specs were requested by three different parties. I've gone through the submitted bid, comparing the 14-page bid specs that I put out, and Nexus complied with every provision with the point thing. They scored 100 out of a possible 100. They've done, Nexus done work for Wells County since 2006. The last cyclical reassessment contract was executed in 2011 for 2012 through 17 at a cost of $477,500. So, this one's down about $39,000. The contract will be on a form, model contract provided by the state. Unfortunately, they don't have it done yet. They always have to change something every time. Once the contract form is completed, I'll prepare it, furnish it to Roy, and if acceptable, return to you once Nexus has executed it.
What is the completion date or the accepted date? What's the required deadline? By the end of the calendar year, by the end of January, or?
The calendar year, end of the calendar year, so that they can get started in 18.
Technically, if we don't do it today and Kevin's not here, we can do it at next meeting if we need to, but.
Proceed with getting it ready, since it's not ready anyway.
Yeah, they don't have the contract.
And I know there was a couple of things that I discussed with Rick, that, you know, if the contract, normally, when I work on a contract, if it affects me during my session or term in office, that it applies only to that section, not to infringe or put a burden on somebody coming in to take that position after you would leave that office. So, and I understand that the individual willing or considering currently works with this software, so that might be running for the assessors.
This is not software. This is the services.
Services, right. But other.
She's, she's current, the lady that's going to run for the office is currently in the Steuben County Assessor's Office. They use Nexus as their reassessment contractor.
Right. So.
And they've used them for considerable amount of time. She's the chief deputy, so she has interaction with them every day.
Sure. Sure. So, let's. Sometimes it's hard to avoid that overlap, though, when you've got a periodic. It's not something you can not, not do.
Correct. Yeah, we're mandated by the legislature to.
We don't have much choice on this one, other than if we would hire somebody to have it done in-house, and then that would require training and payments to that person.
Exactly.
And benefits to that person or people, and so unfortunately, there's not a lot of alternative at this stage.
That's correct. And just before I came to office, the previous assessor attempted to bring another employee in to do that, and by the time it was over, it was more expensive than hiring folks like So, it's been, been tried all over the place, you know, to do it in-house. As I was telling, like earlier, the principals of Nexus came out of the State Board of Tax Commissioners, is that what it was called before? And the woman that does our ratio study and trending was also in the State Board of Tax Commissioners, the guy that helps me with industrial appeals came out of the State Board. So, these folks have had extensive experience, and to get that by hiring somebody off the street, it would take years to come back up to the level that we are now. And to give you an idea, excuse me, to give you an idea of how good of a job that they do, this year, I had 57 appeals. When I came into office, I had over 200 that I was cleaning up from the previous administration. So, they do a good job, and my primary field guy lives in Lofton, used to work in the Assessor's Office. So, he knows, he knows the county very well, and he knows the procedure very well, because they, they, I can't say recruit him, they direct him to go to Blackford County to help them, to go to Steuben County. He's been up there to help them over in Lake County. So, we, we kind of, I think, have the best of both worlds.
Okay. Well, well.
We'll wait the contract.
Yeah, bring the contract at our next bidding. I don't foresee any issues whatsoever.
Well, if it's not done by next meeting, I can't guarantee that I'll, you know, have, I'll be at the same point that I am now.
Right.
As soon as they get that contract out, you know, I'll get it over to, in the counselor's hands.
Again, I guess if they're going to start in January, they better get with it.
Yeah. Yeah, make sure we have it just as quick as possible.
Okay.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth, do you have any additional items? I know you sent us a couple of things.
I have, in your packet, I gave you all the board applications that we have so far and that deadline for the advertisers have stuck up. So, we'll do that at the next meeting.
Oh, great.
So, and I think Lori has sent a copy of a ordinance for the Commissioner's district. Have you had a chance to review that?
Redistricting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did have a conversation, and Kevin expressed that he would like to be in present, present when that decision is made, so.
I just didn't know if there was anything you wanted us to do, but we'll do that at the next meeting.
I think we'll be okay, but he wanted to be here, so.
Absolutely. And I have the annual certificate for the county commissioners to sign that they are in compliance with the neptunism that we have to do every year, the same that you don't hire contracts with your relatives and stuff like that. Annual certificates will be in with your packet of stuff to sign. So, and I believe that is all I have.
Okay. That's good. That's quick.
Mm-hmm.
Anything, Roy, for us?
I do have one right-of-way from the area plan. They require in a minor subdivision that you show you have adequate access to the property, and so we have a highway right-of-way for that.
They grant us the X additional.
Yes, this is from Charles and Donna Cochran, right-of-way for their property along County Road 200 East.
Okay, so motion to approve and accept that right-of-way.
I have a motion. So, we have a second. Two, all in favor? Whatever.
Do we?
All in favor? Two, zero. Golly, there's nothing in this coffee. Okay.
Only other thing I have is I was contacted some months ago by an individual concerning a property owned by the county through a tax sale in the 40s, and it's right along the road, and I don't know how wide it is, but it's not, you know, you could maybe pitch a tent, I don't know. Not very big. And so, it's off the tax rolls, and she was indicating her parents were interested in acquiring it, and that's after going through the sale of a portion of the county home farm in terms of appraisal and this and that. And I just, well, she asked me about it again last week, and I looked further in the code, and there is a special section dealing with properties acquired by the county as a result of a tax sale for little or no consideration. So, generally, it, my recollection is, it involves sending a notice to the adjoining property owners, and then you could receive proposals.
Okay.
So, I asked you permission to pursue that, and it doesn't look like it would involve any other expense other than. any other expense other than advising the joining landowners and see what the proposal is. Even if it's nothing, at least it would put property on the tax rolls.
Do we need to make a motion for that? Or just tell you it's okay?
I'm just reporting it to you.
I would just let him do it, and then if it brings evidence of something.
And when you get proposals, then.
Then we can deal with it.
Then we can make that.
Okay.
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing further from me.
All right. Audience, open comments. Well, both of us attended our conference last week in Indianapolis. Kevin was there also.
And Nate.
So a lot of, Nate was down, so there was a big turnout.
They try to teach us things. One of the things that I sat through was the speech on the opioid crisis, and I think that it's a big subject with no real answers, and I'm afraid that if not careful, they're going to be making legislation to tie hands and limit physicians and the people that need to deal with the issue rather than handling the real problem, which are the drug dealers and the illegal substances, so. Anyway, it was kind of frustrating, other than that. Did you pick up, you said you picked up something down there?
I sat through a session on open door and discussions that you can discuss things in open and private and things like that, so it was standing room only. So I had a couple of questions that were answered, which I was not aware of, and some things that kind of seem pretty trivial that you do need to follow. And there's, a lot of times, there's information that comes to us that you just want to share and you can't or shouldn't, or, but there's some things that, you know, we're going to have an executive session tomorrow. So things that are presenting themselves that you basically figure out, it's like, can we even meet? I mean, what's your schedule like? Well, what's it about? You know, you know, and trying to fit that in. But, you know, it's, we're trying to do our best with the limited access laws that are here, and we want to be transparent as much as we can, too, so. But some things you don't want to divulge if it never comes to be, so they could set a precedent. But no, there's a lot of stuff going on, and to encouraging, I'll put it that way, so. And sorry, Leon, no more information from River Terrace.
Susan, there?
Not a word, so it just.
What does that mean?
I don't know. Not a word, unless you've got something from Dave out of the.
No. I'll send him another email.
Okay.
Last word I heard, they were still trying to think what would be fair compensation for what their investment has been made into it. And after a couple of weeks, I thought, well, wait a minute, you didn't build it, you bought it from the previous entity that built it at bankruptcy. I doubt that you paid fair market value, you know? And I doubt there's any allocation of the purchase price for the lift station, but it's like.
And it's used, so.
It would be interesting to see how, how they have attributed on their books to the lift station. Probably don't. I doubt there's anything in the bankruptcy court that showed a value for that, but.
Yeah, I doubt if that was identified in any paperwork as a standalone item, so.
So, so trying to discover what the First River Terrace Estate paid for it, it's like, how's that relevant?
Does it even matter? Yes.
Yeah. And I, you know, again, I found that invoice and talked to a contractor, what it should have been valued back in 2002, and that's all we have, so.
Remember the email we got from, from IDEM saying that now that McKinney-Paxton is done, you can take it out of that section of the code that dealt with a court ordered and go back to the general, which might eliminate the requirement that you have to have somebody associated with the McKinney-Paxton project and, I don't know, I'd have to see if the general thing says you can't be a member or can't be hooked up to the city, but that would require us to do a little change on our.
When you mentioned the city, as far as I know, Lee hasn't received any word from the city as to the taps on 250 North. Remember at the city commons meeting when Lee and you and I were there?
Mm-hmm.
That, one of the last things the mayor said is that they would look into taps, you know, on 250 North, but he didn't give us a definitive answer by any means.
The last email I got from Tony Crowell, the city attorney, was, because we had a concern like, well, what is this? We're responsible for a line. We have to build a new line?
A transmission line.
Transmission line, and, and his response was generally, they're expecting that the regional sewer district is going to use the River Terrace Estate lift station.
Right.
But it hasn't, that hasn't been determined yet, though.
Well, they're, they're saying they anticipate we would do that, rather than they didn't want a multiple taps into their high-pressure line.
I took it that we would have to utilize everybody going to River Terrace and not, not individually tapping the pressure line on 250.
I understand, that's the city's wish, but I don't know that that's everybody else's wish.
Well, River Terrace has not said no, they've just said, we don't know how much.
Right.
No, I understand that, yeah, yeah. But I'm looking at the whole picture to see what's the most economical for the homeowners. That's, you know, I want to see all of the options.
Sure.
Not just one option that the city has in mind.
Right. So, let's see where that leads.
And if that ends up being the best option, so be it, but I'm not convinced yet that it is.
I like your approach.
Thank you.
Jessica, anything? Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Two oh, we're done, we have a second. We are finished. Thank you.